Okay, good evening, everyone. Like to call to order the Oakland Town Commission meeting for November 12th, 2024. This is the only meeting we'll have for November, so if everybody could please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. All right, Elise.
Commissioner McMullen, Commissioner Pollan, Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield, Mayor Taylor. We're all here.
All right, thank you. So next on our agenda, we have a few items to go over today. And just for clarification for those that are joining online, we have a new audio visual system that we're trying out. So bear with us while I work the bugs out on that. What you'll probably see is good video, but the sound may need a little bit of work. Next on the agenda is proclamate our presentations and that's three appointments. One to the Appearance Review Board and two to the Planning and Zoning Board. So with that, we have to swear you gentlemen in to be on those boards. So if I could have everybody come up to the podium. Make it easy then. Okay, so we're gonna do the best we can to do this.
I'll try and speak loud.
All right, so if you can raise your right hand. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and will obey the laws of the state of Florida. That I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and Code of Ordinances of the town of Oakland, Florida. And I will faithfully perform the duties as a member of a board which I'm appointed to. Okay, thank you. All right, so you want them to sign this? Okay, so you guys can sign. Thank you. So I'll ask for a motion from the table if anybody would like to accept these gentlemen on to our Planning and Zoning and ARB board.
I'll make a motion to accept.
All in favor? Hey, thank you guys for volunteering. Really appreciate it. Thank you, it means a lot. Thank you. All right. So moving on to the next item is our public forum. And this is a chance for anyone in the public to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, tonight's agenda. Anybody in the audience like to speak? Yes, ma'am. You guys need to come up, please, to the podium, speak clearly and say your name and address, please, for the record.
Hello. My name is Noreen Torkin. I'm the editor in chief of Vox Populi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. On November 9th, Vox Populi ran a story that revealed that Commissioner Ramos's company, Empire Finish Systems, violated campaign finance law with its donations to Austin Arthur's campaign for county commission. The company donated $1,000 on June 29th, 2023, and another $1,000 on August 23rd, 2023. According to the Division of Elections, contributions to an individual candidate are capped at $1,000. Contributions to PACs, political action committees, are unlimited. So my question to Commissioner Ramos is, sir, you have been a sitting commissioner since 2015. You know the election rules better than anybody. How did this happen?
I have no comment.
Sir, you are a public servant. I am here representing the public. You serve the public. The public has a right to know why you violated the law. This is a crime. This is not inconsequential. This is if you are prosecuted and convicted, this comes with a punishment of up to a year in prison or a $1,000 fine. You owe it to these people to explain how this happened.
The check has been replaced, has been given back by the campaign for Arthur because it was made one too many. It was brought back. So that's as far as I can give you information.
The Austin Arthur campaign did find the money after Vox Populi. Crime is that you over-donated. That's still a crime. How did it happen? This is your commitment. Thank you.
Anyone else have any? Yes, ma'am. Come to the podium, please, name and address, please.
Long walk.
My name is Judy Ross, so I live at 201 Barley Avenue. Want to put something out, food for thought, having had conversation with Mike Parker the other day. And as you know, Barley Farm at the end of this Barley Avenue is currently under construction. And will continue to be under construction for a long time. And I just wanted to reach out to Police Chief and say, maybe there's some opportunity for us to remind residents, because there's always been a speed issue on Barley anyway, of the speed limits, because you're going to have a lot of activity down there. A lot of folks that aren't necessarily familiar with, because not every road has a speed limit sign. So you've got lots of people coming and going. And we as residents needed here to those speed limits, just like any visitor or construction group would. But we're, you know, we're headed down that path where the volume of traffic will definitely increase. So it's just food for thought. I don't, I don't necessarily have an answer, but I just wanted to throw it out as a, as a point to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. You are correct, it will get, it will get busier. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back. And we have a resolution on the table tonight. My iPad just came up, so I apologize. Consent agenda, guys, sorry, bear with me. On the consent agenda tonight is minutes from the 10:22, 24 Town Commission regular meeting, a Tree City USA application submitted by Public Works, GIS inter-local agreement, and a letter of support from the town for Florida's Institute of Government at UCF. Any questions or comments? Nope. Hearing, make a motion, anyone?
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Now, moving on to resolutions. And Elise, you want to read this one?
This is Resolution 2024-09, Resolution of the Commission of the Town of Oakland, Florida, amending the defined contribution retirement plan for the police officers of Oakland, Florida, providing for conflicting resolutions and providing an effective date.
Okay. Any questions or comments for anybody or any questions about what this? No? Okay. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2024-09.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Moving on to our ordinances tonight, and it is Ordinance 2024-10. It's the first public hearing for a Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for Oakland Commercial Center PUD, which is located behind the racetrack gas station.
For the record, this is Ordinance 2024-10. This is a first public hearing for a Second Amendment to Development Agreement, Oakland Commercial Center PUD, in ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development, as recorded in the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, Document Number 20180584301, with a First Amendment to the Development Agreement, as recorded in the Public Records of Orange County, Florida, Document Number 20190053646, to approve the Oakland Exchange Office Complex on certain real property owned by Racetrack Inc., as more particularly described herein, making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Thank you. All right, Sarah, representing Wade Trim tonight, how are you? Good. What you got for us? Got something good?
Sarah Masterson, Wade Trim, contracted town planner. So as Elise and the mayor mentioned, we are presenting the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development Amendment to their, the Oakland Exchange Office Park. The address is the southwest corner of Remington Road and Southern Railway, right behind Racetrack. The applicant is JW2 Development LLC, Wayne King as their representative. The owner is Racetrack Inc. The lot area is approximately four and a half acres. The existing use is a vacant lot. It's lots five and six, and it's a part of the Oakland Commercial Center. And the intent tonight is to amend the Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development for lots five and six for the proposed Oakland Exchange Office Park. This is an aerial view. The blue outline is the overall planned development, and the red outline are the two parcels that we're discussing tonight. A little background on this property. In 2018, Ordinance 2017-16 was approved by the Town Commission for the Oakland Commercial Center PD and the Development Agreement of approximately 15 acres. It was approved for 25,000 square feet of retail and 30,000 square feet of office. In 2019, there was a First Amendment to that PD, which which was the First Amendment to, for the actual construction of Racetrack. Through the approval, this was the concept plan for the overall development that was reviewed and approved. In the circle, you can see what the configuration of Lot Five and Six conceptually looked like when it was approved then. So under this amendment, they are asking to increase their allowable square footage for office from 30,000 to 37,184 square feet, so approximately 7,184 additional square feet. They are revising the plan and design for lots five and six. So the original concept plan showed approximately four bigger buildings, and they're looking to do 12 smaller buildings. They're also looking to eliminate the landscape buffer that is between five and six, since they're doing an overall development on the two lots. The landscape buffer in between is not really needed. And then they're asking to reduce the width from six to five feet for the sidewalk. That's internal to the property. And then they are asking to increase the maximum size for a monument sign from 31 square feet to 42 square feet. This is their layout plan for the site. The green trees, the green dots are trees. Their development agreement requires them to save 18 trees that are at least 16 inches DBH or greater, and they are achieving that through this design. Okay, as far as infrastructure goes, the project will connect to town potable water and sewer. There's no irrigation with the town. If they want water for irrigation, they will have to provide a well. Coordination with the city of Clearmont for sewer capacity, that it's the owner's responsibility. There was a traffic study submitted and approved by the town contracted engineer, and no mitigation for the traffic was determined. The project will project traffic to be less than 2% of the existing traffic. And then lastly, stormwater will need to be in compliance with the existing St. John's Water Management Permit. So these are some renderings of what they would like to do with the buildings out there. There's a few slides that Elise can just kind of pop through of the concept of what they would like to do. So the concepts for these buildings will go through a separate Appearance Review process. It'll go to the Appearance Review Board, Planning and Zoning Board, and Town Commission. It has already gone to the Appearance Review Board. The proposed Second Amendment to Oakland Commercial Center Plan Development, unless specifically amended by the Second Amendment, all conditions and requirements of the previous development agreement remains in full force and effect. The developer requirement to make improvements at their cost to connect to and any required utilities, the developer will be required to pay for. Tree protection and landscape buffering are still required, and plating and infrastructure dedication requirements will still be required. The public response. The property was posted for a public hearing with signs on October 1 of 2024. Mailing notices were also sent out on September 30 of 2024. As of October 15, we've received two responses in opposition, one phone call and one email on from Lot Six and Five, which is adjacent to this property. And then several property owners from John's Cove appeared at the October 15, 2024 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting and provided their feedback as well. So on October 15, the Planning and Zoning Board gave their recommendation. They recommended approval with the following conditions. They recommended that the additional landscaping around the dumpster enclosures be provided to enhance the screening between the dumpster enclosures and the lots that are adjacent to where they'll be. They denied the request to increase the monument sign from 32 square feet to 42 square feet, and they denied the request to reduce the sidewalk from six feet to five feet. The town staff, we were concerned with the denial of the five-foot condition as the existing sidewalks that it would connect to are five feet already. So we thought that, you know, a six-foot sidewalk wouldn't be compatible to connecting to those. This is just an aerial image of the two sidewalks that exist. The one on the right is Remington, and the one on the left is the existing sidewalk that's internal to the development in Southern Railway, and those are both five feet. Okay. So the next steps, the Town Commission's second hearing for this will be on December 10. Then they'll need to replat lots five and six, and then it'll the Appearance Review process, it already went to the Appearance Review on November 11th, or sorry, November 5th, and then it goes to P&amp;Z on November 19th, and then finally, it'll come to Town Commission on December 12th, or December 10th, I'm sorry. And then after that, if all is approved, final construction and engineering plans will be reviewed, and then a building permit could be applied for. Based on everything that was submitted, the town has reviewed for compliance with the Conference of Plan, the Land Development Code, and the staff recommends approval of Ordinance 2024-10 for the proposed Oakland Exchange Office Complex, including the P&amp;Z recommendation of conditions for the enhanced dumpster screening and the denial of the monument sign from 32 square feet to 42 square feet. And that's it. So if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer, and the applicant is also here and can answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Anybody here have any questions or anything?
I have a question, some problem. Question I have is why the increase of multiple buildings? What was the thought behind that?
I think to reach the square footage that they would be allowed. They wanted to have shorter buildings, like one-story buildings. And if you get that square footage into four buildings, you're going up. And they wanted to keep it more quaint and more compatible with the residential right behind them. So that's why they went to the smaller buildings to still get the square footage and just make it a little more compatible.
Statement is, you guys did a real good job with preserving the trees. I see the new design, if you go flip back to that page, that you guys actually worked around trees, which I'm really happy about that. Not all developers work around trees. They, you know, usually knock them down and give us new trees, but you guys are actually working with existing trees. I like the brick, you guys incorporated ARB, did a great job. And I like it so far in that sense. And I like the fact that you guys brought it down to one story for the residents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, that was my question.
Commissioner Ramos, so how many businesses are we talking? We're talking 12 plus. How many individual businesses? I know we got a small, 12 businesses, something else. And with that, really wish we do a real good traffic study over there, different times. I live over there. I work from home occasionally, I leave to go out, and it is hard. Get out. With the two gas stations, you have to really. So I really hope we have a real good traffic study. Plus, how many other businesses? Right now, we have two. So we have 13, 14 businesses. That we, so appalled, how many businesses are we?
Do you want to answer that? I'll let this.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Councilmembers, and staff. My name is Jimmy Crawford. I'm an attorney with Crawford, Modica, and Holt. My address is 750 Garden Oaks Road, Winter Garden, Florida, which is about a mile and a half that way, and I work about five miles that way, so I your stop signs sometimes make me go out to the road now. Much rather come this way. So they're working, I know. I, I understand. I do represent JW Square Development LLC, and we do have two principals of that company with us tonight. We have Wayne King and John Schmidt, who are both principals and owners of the development company. And first to answer the question about the number of businesses. 12 plus a little bit might be the right answer. We don't have a prohibition on someone buying a building and renting an office in it. So we anticipate 12, could be two or three more than that. That would seem to be the most to us. And to the other questions that were asked, the increase in the number of buildings was exactly what the planner spoke about. We wanted, the original plan has a mix of two and three-story office buildings and square rectangular kind of institutional-looking office buildings. Of course, they would have to meet your architectural standards today anyway. But we wanted it to be residential in character as its transition between the retail and gas station on the front and the residential behind. And we wanted to be one-story only, so we wouldn't be looking at anybody's backyard from an upper story and to have less impact on the neighborhood. As for the traffic study, that is, is pretty much defined by statute and code, and I'm not a traffic engineer. I actually think they ought to wear pointy hats with stars and moons on them. But they claim to be real engineers, and they have very strict guidelines to go by on when to count the traffic and how to crank the traffic. And this one came back what they call de minimis, less than 2% of the overall traffic. And therefore, there isn't anything that anybody can make improvements or do anything for that. We, the traffic impact analysis also did show that everything functioned the same as before. The parts of the intersection that are failing at peak hour morning especially, still do. But that doesn't have anything to do with our development. We commiserate on traffic. One of the reasons I love coming Oakland Ave is because it is a mess. We know that. The state legislature has largely taken traffic considerations, not safety, but traffic impact considerations, number of cars away from local governments, by introducing a statute 1633130H that says if we don't impact a level of service, then you can't deny us based on traffic. If we do impact a level of service, which we don't, we offer a prop share agreement, an agreement that says, gee, we're 5% of that problem, and it's failing, so it's a million-dollar fix. Here's 5% of that money for you to hold in until you can get enough money. It's a pretty terrible system, I will acknowledge. But that's what we're all stuck with, both developers and local government.
I'm gonna follow up. I'm not concerned about 50, concerned about 20.
Sure, sure.
And it's, I would tell you, it is a mess. Somewhere around 720, whenever the kids, I don't have any young kids anymore. Yeah. But when, when I'm trying to go out, cleaners, grocery stores, I do that in the morning. It is hard to get in and out. So I'm not sure what we can do to really dig into this, to look at this, but we really need to look.
Commissioner, is it the timing of the light?
No, it's not the timing of the light. It's only two lanes, and it's two gas stations. And so if you add 12 more businesses over there, I'm
Those cars filing into Remington
Who live there, leaving to go to work.
Right.
The line can easily go from 50 to both John's Landing and John's Cove entrance anymore. Now, I don't go out every day. When I do go out, I run into that periodically, and it can be real. And then you got kids, that's the corner, that's when the bus come. I'm not against it, I just really love
Ideas, Commissioner and Mayor, Commissioner. Can we make Southern Railway exit from the complex, go west one-way, so it doesn't So it doesn't go east towards Remington Road? And then they veer out to Colonial, which is half a mile west of Remington to alleviate some of the traffic coming out of the neighborhoods?
Gas station, when they come out of racetrack, they come out.
So really the only way to get out of.
You can't get out two ways.
It's a racetrack, you have to go back to Southern Railway, take a left, get on Remington and hit the line.
Correct.
Or you can go the other way. Or you go out the side and, but you have to go right. Or go around to fifty and take a right.
Well, most people are feeding. When you're leaving, you got homes and you got both gas stations feeding into the family.
Yeah.
Like tonight, I'm leaving tomorrow. I'm getting gas tonight. So I don't have to worry about it tomorrow. You have to do that type of. Have to get gas tonight. Cause if I don't, if I get gas in the morning, I'm stuck trying to get out of there.
Play.
I don't know if they can.
That we think.
It has to be, it's already a mess now, you know, when, when racetrack. It's, it's hard. And I feel for people who have to go out every single along with their kids being picked up by the, I think it's two times.
But is that, you don't think the timing of the, of the traffic signal at fifty and making being longer, getting those?
I mean, it probably can help, but I don't think that's the major. It's just the volume.
Hard.
You know, cause you, you don't know who's gonna get gas coming from Claremont every day. So you got, and you got construction workers that go over there and especially racetrack now. It just, it, it really, you know, just though you adding twelve businesses. I can't imagine how twelve businesses is gonna be added into that area. I really can't see it.
Well, the, the good news is they are offices, not retail businesses. And so they will generate a lot less traffic. And at seven thirty, when at least the elementary school traffic is out, it won't be over. I've dealt with this issue with Wawa's and racetracks before. And their traffic is a whole lot as that morning construction traffic. Like you say, the landscapers, the construction people, the roofers, they all come in and fill up their big gulps and get their burritos and, and head out. I do the same thing, but it's at eight-thirty and not five-thirty like them. It, the traffic, schools and water and sewer are the, 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 the things that every time are the major issues. And we've done what we can to do that. And thirty thousand square feet of this traffic is already approved. We're asking for seven thousand more, which is a couple of dozen trips a day that we'll be adding over the existing approval. And we think that the better design, less impact to the community, more than outweighs that impact, we think.
I'm not a traffic pro, but someone, we really need to look at.
Yeah. I, I don't disagree with the adult.
Rated A to D or F, whatever it is, but that traffic. I want that area to be developed. I really, really do. Saying, I don't want us to get screamed at. It's hard to get out. And I don't wanna, I don't be repetitive for repetitive. It is hard.
Thing the ask might be, we've got a month between the first and the second for you guys maybe take a deeper dive and come up with another suggestion?
That's a very fair ask. Yes.
Yeah, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that.
I understand.
As the, I mean, we gotta go very granular on that part. You're, you're, you're looking at a headache.
Awesome. Okay. We'll do that and we'll probably try to have our traffic engineer come to the December tenth meeting because I'm out of my league pretty fast.
And not necessarily wait till we get to second, you know, reading of it for me.
Work with staff.
Yeah. And are we anticipating businesses have a later start? Is that gonna be part of your, your plan of offering, you know, they have to have this, can't start no earlier than, is that possible? Is that something you're gonna, you're gonna do?
It isn't in the plan right now and the, but the range of uses that are allowed are generally at eight-thirty at least to others. And we'll take a hard look at that as well.
I'm good. Appreciate it.
The, yes, sir.
How do you compute the parking spaces that you need for this project? It looks like you have a lot, but I just want to make sure we're gonna have parking spaces. We seem to have a doesn't have enough parking.
The parking spaces are per town code and that's one to two hundred square feet. Is that correct? Kara? Yeah. And so we're actually overparked just barely. And you know, it's gonna depend on what uses go in. Cause things like medical office generate a lot more use in parking and traffic than in your insurance office. So we, we meet the code, exceed it just a little bit. And hopefully it will, you know, work out accordingly. We could get more if we cut more trees, but we sure didn't want to do that. So.
Next, next, next.
No, I didn't say that. Strike that remark, please. The traffic now, let's go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Those fine words. Thank you. Question for the light and the south side of the property where the parking lot's at, you know, the homes are jented to it. Just wanted to find out what your plans are for the parking light.
Right.
How long they're gonna stay on? Cause it's gonna be bothering some of the residents there, there, you know, all night.
Well, hopefully it won't because they're gonna be short in their fully shielded dark sky compliant lighting. So nobody will see a bulb at all. And the off-site lumens, we've done a light study with our application and we're not allowed to do more than one lumen off-site. And the study shows that we don't. The lights are not planned to be on all night, but they'd be on like in the winter as long as any businesses are open. Uh, that's something we can look at before December again and see if there's something we can put into order to, to help all the neighbors.
Project that you guys have behind the Schmidt Building, behind the Domino's Pizza on Colonial?
Yes.
Is that the same product? Those offices behind the CrossFit Domino's?
No, it's a your office is over, over here? These are more residential in design, but those are one-story and they had to do Winter Gardens facade of, of the exterior that they wanted, but similar.
Very similar, yes.
I'm gonna have to say yes. That's, that's correct. Other than some architectural differences, it's the same concept. And I, I have one other question, if, if and when it's the right time.
Oh, okay. I, I have a few things, but go ahead if you want to ask yours.
Well, we would like to respectfully request consideration of the forty-two foot square sign. I understand it's ten extra feet over what is allowed, but we went from four buildings and probably much less than twelve businesses to we're gonna have twelve. And being able to correct signage for that, where people can actually drive in and see. A lot of people don't need it these days, but some people still do. And we don't think that's an imposition on anyone's aesthetic. And we would request, we'll accept your decision, of course, but we would request consideration.
You have signage on the building too, though.
Yes, sir.
That's true. My, my few questions are, Mr. King, Mr. Schmidt, I appreciate you guys taking the initiative to come to town and help grow the commercial base of the town. Really appreciate that with that. You know, just going through the few notes that I have, revised site layout I think is okay for me. The internal five-foot easement would be okay for me. The monument sign, I'm, I'm a no on it, but the five-foot sidewalk, unless somebody thinks differently, it's already established in there. I don't have a problem keeping it five foot throughout the the development there. I do have something, Stephanie maybe to consider for the developer's agreement. And that is on just above section three, flat amendment, it says all trees shown to be saved and approved site plan attached to N A must be properly protected or sure it's a viability during the, during and after construction. Before, during and after construction, any change to the trees shown and saved shall require approval by the town commission. The town commission shall determine mitigation requirements. I like to add in there, or payment of fees in a tree mitigation fund. So it's not replanting trees on site. It's, it's not replant. It's not replanting trees on site. It's, we determine that a developer needs to put those square inches you're taking out into a tree mitigation fund that can then be used at town's discretion.
Yes.
Is that any problems with you guys?
None at all. No. Do you have, I'm sorry, this is probably none of my business. Do you have a town ordinance that allows payment into mitigation fund? Because, well, it's a great idea.
Yes, we, we are, we are almost there, but.
Well, we'll be the first.
You will. That doesn't mean you cut down all your trees and get.
No, no, of course not. Hope they don't die.
Gotta clear that up right now for the record. The other thing I have is dumpster enclosures, the dumpsters being close to the residence. I think in the planning and zoning, from what I understood is that that was a concern. And I know the AR, P and Z made a comment about adding in some extra landscaping around those. I don't know if your engineer can look at other areas the dumpster enclosures can go through. I understand that racetrack's there and I understand that they get their dumpster delivery, but you know, unless you can control when the dumpsters are picked up, if it can be something that's during the regular days, not at two in the morning or three in the morning, but I don't believe you have that type of control, just like I can't control when the garbage, what time he on my street. I would like for us to kind of maybe look at a op alternatives to where those dumpster locations are on the, on the site plan as well.
Mr. Taylor, we will. We, we were asked that at P and Z and we did some quick work there and even some work later. And the only alternative is to move the dumpster that is on the south line to the west line near the southeast corner. And because of course, they've got to have a run that they can get into and back out of. And the concern with that from both the neighbors in the town was that that then gives you a really long backup line that is, you've heard the peeping from that, I am certain. And we probably can't control the timing of it. So it's a balancing act. We will take another hard look at that absolutely.
I would appreciate that. That would be very helpful. And then, and then you're like Commissioner Ramos had brought up about the light study. LEDs can do amazing things with cutoff lights and stuff nowadays.
Absolutely.
As far as doing that. Those are the few items that I had on there. Appreciate your time.
Oh, thank you very much. Anything else? We're happy to answer questions. And if we have neighbors that have concerns, if we try to answer questions, we'd love a moment to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. So with that, this is being a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this project? Oh, yes, ma'am. Come to the podium, please. Name, address.
Hi, Anne Fulton, two-two-seven Largo Vista, uh, being Commissioner McMullin's neighbor and having two at home had four to start. We traveled this road several times a day down Remington. My kids go to school. I have a high schooler driving to and from school, to and from work. As Commissioner McMullin said, it is a hot mess and especially adding in, you know, with the construction people, like you said, the kids traveling to school, the school buses, we're building a new subdivision, adding twenty more, twenty-something more houses down at the end of Remington. So you've done a traffic consideration. That's great. And I also the law says you don't have to do anything. That's it doesn't, integrity. I understand you couldn't bear but I would kindly ask that the town and the developers work together to make it more safe for everyone. There are so many kids who walk, ride their scooters, ride their bike up to the gas station. Not everyone can. The slurry, some people want to go across the street, across Remington to the racetrack. Get a free ice cream on your birthday. My thirteen-year-old. So I would ask that we all work together, the town and the developers to work to make it a safer intersection. Put in crosswalks, put in something to make it safer for our kids, to make it less frustrating for all of the semi trucks, the dump trucks, everyone that comes through there as it's a great interchange at the turnpike. Everyone stops there. Everyone from Claremont stops there, laughing their hearts. But find a way to make it safer with crosswalks, lighting, speed bumps, something to make it safer for everyone involved, especially adding a new subdivision and a twelve business development at the same.
Thanks. Thank you. Has, is there any objection to the developer doing a revised traffic study? I'm not sure how old the original traffic study is. Was it done when the new subdivision that was coming down Bay Lake or whatever it is?
I believe it's dated September, but I, I, I don't want to.
September of twenty-four?
This year. Yeah, yeah. We applied in July of this year and it was done after that.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't believe I saw it in the packet. So.
We're, we're gonna, we'll have a call with our traffic engineer later this week, based on the comments and concerns that we've heard from you guys. And we'll see what can be done. We're we are partners. And while we can't fund, you know, two more lanes that they're totally ourselves, if there's something that we can do or something we contribute to, we're, we're happy to do that.
Well, like I said, just you don't need to wait for the thirty days to come back to us.
Sir, that's perfect. Understood.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Sir, Judy Rosser, two oh one Bradley Avenue. I saw the concepts in the, in the packet. And are they approved? The, the, the building concepts? Is that an approved building design?
ARB, I don't think it's, hasn't come to us yet for approval.
Okay, because eons ago, I was in a charrette for the town. I can't remember what year it was. But anyway, the concern was that there'd be consistency. And so building across from this location, which is I think a patio furniture place? Yeah. So it's more, that building is more consistent with what is here in town. And the buildings that are in this packet are much more modern. And yes, they're not like right next to each other, but it makes sense in my mind that you make the buildings consistent. If this is Oakland, this is Oakland, this is Oakland, this is Oakland. Just consistency. That's all. That's my comment. Just try to keep it within the same, you know, design element, brick, whatever, not stone. It, those that are in there, in my opinion, look pretty modern. Thank you.
Thanks. Where, where are we at on that, Elise, at this time? Has it gone through ARB or? Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Sarah. Ooh, you gotta get to the mic. You're gonna yell.
This did go to ARB. They did recommend approval. One side note to this is that the development agreement had some conceptual designs of the buildings. And they found it and we found it generally consistent with what was adopted conceptually through the development agreement.
Back in general development agreement?
Twenty eighteen.
Okay.
So that predated, I believe, your design code. So that might be why it looks a little different than what is required now. So that predated, I believe, your design code. So that might be why it looks a little different than what is required now.
Yeah, I understand the intent is to try to blend it in with the residential that's there.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, you're I understand what you're saying. It's it's got a hip roof and it doesn't have the parapet walls and flats like you would a racetrack or or across the street or. Okay, anyone else from the audience? Okay, so no one else will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table. There's no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
There are a lot of things you got to add in there.
I made a motion to approve the first reading of second development agreement of the Oakland Commercial Center PUD with the discussion of comments made by the mayor along with the traffic study comments to ensure that we do some additional second it. Look at the architectural design again. Adding on the review of the
Okay, so that decision.
We'll get this down, I promise.
If we could run through the list, I believe there's the dumpster screening, the increased monument sign and the five foot sidewalks that were already pulled out by P and Z for your consideration. And then there's the concern about the traffic study and anything else that you want to add, but I believe items listed in the motion.
Is it okay if I kind of just mention what I had said on my list so that he gets it down? It makes them.
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I was opposed to was the monument sign and the five foot. Okay, just getting that together in the dumpster.
I I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash ten, the first public reading of the second amendment of the development of Oakland Commercial Center PUD requesting additional traffic study. What else was the not approval of the increased signage sidewalk, you can approve a change of five foot. And study on relocation and the study on a relocation. And the mission review of
Good.
Second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye aye. All right. Okay. Moving on, other policy matters. Thank you, by the way. Thank you. Thank you. Other other policy matters, and it is the town attorney, town of Oakland Attorney Services proposal, I believe everybody received a copy of the proposal from the town attorney. Is anyone, are you, Stephanie, are you speaking on the those law firms behalf tonight? Push your button. Send.
All right. Yes, Mayor and members of the commission. Before you, we have a proposal to increase the the budget and the fees for the town attorney's office from the present seven thousand dollars a month to ten thousand dollars a month. We believe that these fees, which it would be a flat inclusive fee, including all the services that we currently provide. We believe that this is consistent and competitive as demonstrated by this breakdown that he provided. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions about anything?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I think that it it is in budget and fair with the experience that we've had.
Thank you very much.
I'll be the bad guy and ask the tough questions. So again, thank you. I I think, again, having your experience, just many years you've been here is 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 a pro to the whole thing. You don't have to bring somebody in. But, you know, in October, you approached the town, we you you sent a resignation letter in to the town. Is there a reason why that resignation letter was submitted to the town to resign as the town attorneys and then you rescinded that resignation letter? And to me, it appeared once we approved a tentative town budget of a hundred and twenty, you kind of said, ooh. That's how I viewed it. So I'm just, you know, there's some good answers to that one.
In looking at the the time spent versus the the flat fee of the seven thousand dollars, it's not the same town that it used to be, unfortunately. There's just a lot going on here. And so I think serving as the town attorney's office in previous years was simply less of a busy time. And so we had to take a look at how many man hours were we spending and and it's it's just kind of inflation, I suppose you could say, everything going up.
Understand. And but you had came in before in October of twenty three, from what I've seen, asked for an increase, got that increase. And then eight months later. Significant. I do agree with you. Town has grown. It's going to continue, continue. Those are my comments. Questions. All right. Anyone else? No? Okay, so is there any, you make a motion on this one? Okay, we would like to make a motion.
Motion that we services of both law firms.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stewart, town manager.
Couple items for discussion. Good evening, Mr. Member of the town commission. The first one is town Department, we have installed what we were considering a pilot project on West Gully using a different type of road material, asphalt milling. We have put the asphalt milling down. Town has to go back and we'll try to make they also try some other techniques using the same type of materials. So we're not quite done with that project yet. So if you do happen to drive down, it is a little bumpy. But we do expect to make those fixes hopefully here in the next week. So then we'll have a good idea as to the other issue that's come up in discussion, some of them meet the mayor's meetings as well as well as staff level is the cellular communication in town. It seems that some of our service providers don't have the greatest coverage in some of the areas, especially here in the downtown, what I consider downtown of Oakland. So we've reached out to a communications carrier who's going to try to help us with identifying some areas that some carriers may install some additional communication antennas in town. And so we'll have hopefully an idea of how to address that issue here in the next couple of weeks. So in December, hopefully I'll have time to present it back to the commission, but we are working to getting better cellular coverage within the town. So those are the only two things I have. I'd like to thank Elise for the all the work that she's done here tonight to get us to this point. She's been working on this for a solid month. And it's not an easy task when it comes to technology and and she's done this one hundred percent on her own with contractors that were hired to do that. And we have some minor adjustments that she'll be working on, but really just not an easy feat to televise it, make everybody happy, but we'll tweak it as we go. Thank you for all your hard work on that. Really everything you do for town. That being said, that's all all I have this evening.
Okay. Go down the line there. How about you? Just anything good? You're good? Okay. Ms. Parker? Uh-oh.
Ah, yeah. Andy, you want to pass that down?
Couple of things here. The debris removal from Hurricane Milton is pretty much over with. We moved out the last cubic yards of what was ground up in place. There was about ten thousand cubic yards of that green waste that we piled up. And then our our internal truck worked for two solid weeks picking up bag debris. So it was quite a bit of debris from small storm. We're positioning ourselves for a FEMA claim on that here in the next six months or so. Number two, on December eleventh, we'll be hosting a meeting right here in this building for the phase two MS four permit holders here in the region. It'll be staffers from Lake County and Orange County, meeting here to go over the stormwater MS four permit that that we have as well as they have. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, Gabby, I know I wasn't here last time. Thank you and you guys too for everything you guys did during the storm. It was phenomenal. Phenomenal. Both of the staff along with the contractors that they came, I think we beat everybody in the county, if not the entire region. Thank you all.
Keith, you got anything?
Just two things. One, the five K, which was rescheduled because of the storm is this Sunday, seven thirty. Run along the trail. Great. Five K, they'll be done in thirty minutes. I'll be done in three hours. And Officer Barry Strukowski, who is our newest officer hired, just completed a twelve week advanced officer or I'm sorry, administrative officer's course, which was sponsored by the Southern Police Institute, very expensive course. It was more than our entire training budget and he secured a private sponsor to go to this court by himself. Three months leave without pay, his commitment to bettering himself as a leader, something to be recognized. He went on leave without pay for three months. I traveled up to Louisville to watch him graduate last Wednesday. Very impressive accomplishment. He returns to work.
Lovely. Thank you. Thank you. Keith, anything, Elise? About to be Gabby's program, Elise, no?
Ew.
You gotta get up there. Yeah, sorry.
Do I ruin?
It's a whole presentation. It's a good presentation, by the way.
I really thought y'all were gonna forget about me. All right, so this is the end of the year figures. This is just an overview based on our accounting software. The actual numbers will come from our audit, which won't happen until probably April, May, June, depending on our new auditor schedule. So you all received an overview. I'm not going to read it word by word. I'm just going to give you the summary. If you have questions, then I can answer those. So for the general fund, the general fund did not exceed its approved budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. And due to it being under budget, a budget amendment is not needed. The general fund is left with approximately eight hundred thousand dollars in reserves. And as mentioned in previous meetings, two hundred thousand of that will go into the new fiscal year that we're operating in to fund the fire rescue bill. And then the remaining reserves will be used for emergencies as well as the town manager, Andy and I, were working on investing some of it to bring in some additional revenue. Enterprise or the water fund. The operating expenses did exceed the proposed number. However, the overall fund did come in under budget, so a budget amendment is not needed for the water fund as well. The operating expenditures exceeded by about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Finance Department and Public Works will monitor the budget closely in the upcoming fiscal year to ensure that the operating expenses are within the proper and the proposed numbers. Impact fees, the impact fee fund did not exceed its approved budget for fiscal year twenty three and due to it being under budget, again, a budget amendment is not needed. All of the money that was not spent in the budget will just go right back into the impact fee reserve for any future projects. Any questions?
Nice. So you're gonna do this once a quarter?
I'm sorry, what?
Sending something like this once a quarter?
No. Unless I'm required.
No. Wait a minute. We need, no, we need to know.
I say no.
Thank you. All right. I think that's it for department reports. We'll bring it back to the table for commission and mayor reports. Anybody? Rick, you want to start down there? Hey, Greg, sound?
I have a letter that Karen Jackson gave me inviting us to the Christmas mount for a child that pastor Rhonda does for Mount Zion every year. And they're asking us to, if we can participate in whatever way we can by giving away toys or whatever resources the town can. I know Commissioner McMullin gets involved with it. We got involved with it last year and years before. I just want a reminder that she brought, she's gonna be making copies for the next meeting that's around. It's just an early reminder. Number two, attended the Metro Plan MAC meeting last week and talked to me, they gave me a stack of coloring books for our museum that shows, there's a contest on drawing what the future looks like for Florida in twenty fifty. And kids are participating all over Central Florida, guessing what it'll look like because that's the new path forward in planning for twenty fifty traffic, not just in Oakland and Remington Road, but all over Central Florida. Estimated five hundred thousand visitors per day in Central Florida. So we have to not just work with the residents, but visitors and information here that you guys can go into the Metro Plan and get, you know, accidents, traffic, future development for the turnpike and Highway fifty, that exit, how they're gonna redirect that towards the overpass or can alleviate some of the traffic, the bottlenecks coming from Claremont onto the turnpike. That's a five year plan, so they're gonna happen quick. But there's a lot of good things for our area as far as traffic control.
Cool. Thank you.
Cities, I apologize, the Florida Cities Committee, so it's five major committees throughout the, I work on the Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Committee. Just real briefly, just go right, right in. Uh, Andy asked that I present an idea about utilizing impact fees, uh, to pay for other services, i.e. grant writer. Good news is, uh, we meet three times, we met in October, we met this past week, we meet in December. And as we meet throughout the year, we kind of streamline and get to one or two policies. So one of the ideas that Andy presented to me to present to the league has moved on to the final round. So hopefully, in, well, impact fees, uh, us adding, you know, utilizing those funds for other services, i.e. grant services, is one of the top two. And normally, each committee has one and a sub one. So regardless of what happens, it, so impact fees is one, quarter of a housing is the other one, which we know is a major issue throughout the state. Quarter of a housing, workforce housing, workforce housing, however you wanna word it, a major issue throughout the country. So those two are moving forward. So either way, uh, we're gonna have, you know, the Florida League of Cities and this 411 cities and towns and villages. And everyone throughout the state really pushing these two, uh, policy positions. One would be the major one, but just want to say, uh, work with Andy and allow me to be his voice. That's been, has really, um, given us the opportunity to possibly get this approved. Of adding impact fees and allowing us to utilize the grant services can really help small. Say thank you to Andy for giving me the talking points and being in front of the, uh, the committee and also the committee. And those other cities throughout, you know, throughout the, um, state that really is feeling it. Being an issue or a challenge for them, because most of the cities in town are small. Whatever way we can, uh, utilize these funds to help with growth. Just this past year, we got vetoed and, and I understood why we got vetoed by the governor. He wants us to move over to grants, but Mike Parkinstaff, they can't really be the quarterback of our grant. They need to be making sure we have all the places. So we get somebody to utilize, uh, grant services to help us infrastructure. Uh, and let them do what they need to do and have someone to monitor those grants. I think we can really make a big change for our town in the next four to five years. And again, I just wanna say thank you to Andy. Our town is champion of one of the major policies that's gonna be a part of, are all the cities in town in state of Florida. When we go to Tallahassee throughout.
I had a couple of things. One is, uh, we moved forward, we had worked with Orange County. And, um, on wise, on what they're gonna do with moving up to John Flake now. Thinking that probably it might be prudent for us to start, uh, talking about getting in front of. It's not a decision for us tonight, but something we'll think about on getting on. Communities can, can recommend they could do something, but it really is mission, gonna have to make that decision. Um, number two, two things will happen before we, uh, reconvene here again. The first is Thanksgiving, so have Thanksgiving, everybody. Um, have a wonderful holiday with your families, please be safe. The second thing is, we have our stand-in lane before we come, that is September 7th, don't come out with a stand-in lane, there's all sorts of best.
Oh, Terry, come on. Push the button.
Okay.
Saturday. Those are available on Saturday. Our. Off.
Here, I knew if I poked the bear, I could get you to talk. And we're gonna, to get together to coordinate the golf cart parade a little bit more, is that the idea?
I have been working with Mayor until. But yes, uh, they'll update us on their plans. But they answered that.
I myself and the else need, we're there.
There's also a farmer's market, okay?
Thank you. Did have a lot of things to say, shitting up, uh, yeah.
You're welcome.
The only thing I have is, uh, you know, thank you. Only thing I have is, uh, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We're hitting that season and, um, uh, it's always fun around town. You can kind of see the changes right now, pulling into night, I think they started putting the Christmas tree up on the fountain. So, uh, you know, it, it's, uh, it's just, it's, it's awesome when you drive through the middle of town and you see the lights. It's really, really cool, uh, for me, at least. But other than that, um, anybody has any, nothing else?
All right, if our hearts and minds are satisfied, it is 8:17 PM.
Thank you, everybody.